07:00 PM, I apologize for the late start. This fiscal management subcommittee meeting is in accordance with Governor Raimondo's Executive Order 20-25 dated April 15, 2020. The Cumberland Fiscal Manager Subcommittee attends to conduct this meeting remotely. The public can participate in this meeting remotely, but not in person by calling 646-558-8656, webinar ID 92327745391, or join at the HTTP address listed and posted on the cumbellinschools.org website and also on the agenda that went out. The password is 6581600, which is our phone number. For additional details, please see events calendar on the district website as mentioned. Approval on the agenda. Pleasure of the committee.
Motion to approve.
Mrs. Bernado makes a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Demonic, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, three to zero. Next item on the agenda is we're going to start with a public comment. We also have a public comment after our discussion of the superintendent school budget. Would anyone like to speak now? Mike, did we open up all phone lines, unmute, and everyone logged in?
Yep. So if anybody has, they want to raise their hand, they can do that. Anybody that's on the meeting through that means, and everybody that's on a phone call is unmuted right now, just so that we can hear a response.
Tony D is on. Got you, Tony.
Mike off. Oh. Mike Kinch is on.
Mr. Counselor Kinch, hello.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Just wanted to let you know I was on.
Excellent. Thank you. Welcome to our meeting. All right, hearing no public comments, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is discussion and our vote on fiscal year 2021 Superintendent School Budget. Mr. Mitchell, you want to lead us off?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see you all. This is a continuation of the fiscal subcommittee meeting that we had on Thursday. I think we, you know, covered some ground there, but we wanted to continue the conversation this evening. So what I thought we could do is the members of the school committee received a presentation, a Google Slide presentation that we worked on today as a central office leadership team. And I just, we just forwarded that document to you within the last half hour or so. And I thought we could start the conversation, Mr. Chairman, by, by my walking you through the document that I shared with you.
Excellent.
And, and just, just some additional information, I did share some, you know, the information with the leadership, district leadership team this afternoon. We, as you know, have meetings every day at 2:30, and I just wanted to give them, you know, some information as well. And Mike Chandler has just loaded the document for everyone to see. So let me walk you through this, and then I'm sure there's going to be some questions. And the whole team is on the call and in the Zoom meeting. Katie Dunkinson is here, Antonio Demana is here, Alex Pragnano was on the call, Mike Chandler's on the call, of course, and Dr. Rachel Santa. So the, the whole team is ready to answer any questions. We also have several principals I saw on the call as well. So if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'll start walking you through this.
Yes, please.
All right, Mike, let's go to the next slide, please. Okay, as you know, just to sort of review, a major issue that we had right from the get go is that we knew that we had this deficit, budget deficit, that we had to address from the get-go. We knew when we started the process early in the year, around January, actually, we knew before January, but when we started putting the budget together, we knew that we had this significant deficit to address, and we started doing it at that particular point in time. We also had some meetings with not only the school committee, but with members of the town council, so that everyone would know what our fiscal status was going into the budget cycle. Next budget, next slide, please. Okay, so again, when we...
Bob, we're having, Bob, we're having a hard time hearing you. Could you hold your mic up, maybe?
Sure.
Sorry.
Okay, thanks for letting me know. Is this better?
A little bit better, yeah. It was going in and out before.
Okay, which is, for some reason, it seems like the only time that I really have from having issues, which is really interesting, with my technology is in school committees. Every other meeting appears to be okay.
Somebody has a dog barking. Could you please...
He's muted.
All right.
Okay. All right, so this is better? Is this better, I hope?
Sounds good.
Yes, it is.
All right. Okay, so this slide that you all are looking at right now, when we, when we were working on that deficit, that $4.8 million deficit that we had, we were hoping that we would get 1.8 million from the town, that's 4%. So when we put together the initial budget, we were, we did it anticipating that we would get 1.8 million. And as you know, given the fiscal circumstances in the town, we did not, we weren't sure how much of that 1.8 we would be getting, so we had to develop a budget to resolve potentially not getting that 1.8 million dollars from the town. In addition to that, in addition to that, we knew that we had to also add to the budget, was it $12,000 or $15,000 to, it was, it was $12,000 to add the Aspen registration feature to our student management system, because we weren't able to do kindergarten registration because of the pandemic. So we had to add the registration, online registration to our Aspen system at a cost of $12,000. So that was an additional budget item that we did not anticipate. And then, of course, there were significant issues with technology.
Hey, Bob, Bob, you're still going in and out. I think it's because your mic is down, halfway down by your shirt. Maybe if you kind of held it up by your mouth, we'd hear you better.
Okay.
Sorry.
Is this better?
Yeah, that's much clearer, much. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, 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 that's okay. Glad you did, Mitchell.
Thank you.
I don't know what you heard and what you heard clearly.
Still bad.
Cutting again.
Still bad.
All right, let me, let me try, let me try without my headset. Let me try. Is this any better?
It's always better at the beginning, and then over time it gets bad. So I don't know. Keep talking, we'll see.
All right, is it better right now?
Yeah, it's a lot clearer.
Can you also hear Sally cooking in the background? Anyway, okay, I apologize. This is frustrating for me. I can only imagine how frustrating it is for you. Okay, so I don't know what you heard, but we had to, in addition to the 1.8, additional 1.8 in cuts that we may have been in a position to include in the budget, we also had to add the online registration so that we could register our incoming kindergarten students. And for your information, this registration feature would not just be for kindergarten, it would be for any new students coming into the district. And then, of course, we know that there were a significant number of technology costs related to the pandemic, and we're hopeful that the stimulus money from the federal government, that is earmarked for Cumberland, we're hoping to use just about all of that to offset the technology costs. Next slide, Mike, please. Okay, here, the document that you see here identifies all of the savings that we anticipate as a result of distance learning and the fact that we have not actually been using the school building. So just very quickly, as you see, because we're not in the school using water, so we're saving money on water, we're saving money on heat, we say, we're saving money on electricity and sewer, that is approximately $200,000 in savings. We know that we're saving $950,000 in transportation costs. We, and because we're not in school and everything is being done electronically, we are saving a significant amount of money in school supplies, mostly paper, and we're anticipating $150,000 in savings there. The next item you see, the techno, technology costs, those are, that's an increase in, in technology costs that, you know, we did not expect, but because of the pandemic, we've had to respond to that. We also lost some revenue in tuition and rentals because we've not been in school. So between those two, we're looking at approximately $400,000. And we, as we have discussed, there may be some additional special education costs that must be addressed as a result of the pandemic in COVID-19, because there may be some students whose needs cannot be met virtually. So the total, we're looking at approximately, right now, around $900,000 in savings. So the question is, how are we going to use that money? Mike, next slide, please.
I wanted to.
So, so the next slide, Mike, the next slide provides information on the total amount of savings that we anticipate. We, as you may recall, there was started, for example, there started to be a reduction in healthcare claims. So we, we had initially projected a significant budget overrun in healthcare claims, but right around that time, we started to see a decrease in healthcare claims. So the initial amount that we projected over budget was reduced slightly. So we anticipate almost $500,000 in savings up to that point. And then the $900,000 in COVID-19 savings, which brings us to almost $1.4 million in savings that we can use to purchase technology and offset some of our costs moving forward. Next slide, Mike. This next slide, everyone, is, provides information, we started to talk about this last Thursday, this next slide, it, you know, provides us with information about how we intend to use the COVID-19 savings that we have projected. We know that there are going to be unemployment costs, so almost more than half a million dollars in unemployment costs can, will be used, the savings will be used to offset that cost, special ed tuitions, we're anticipating that we will need approximately $150,000 more in special ed tuitions. We know that we're going to need more Chromebooks to the tune of $250,000. We also had budgeted technology items that would include things like technology for adults and also things like servers, which are critical to getting information out and internet access with not only all of our schools, but with our community. So we are using, we, we have a plan to use all of the money in our COVID savings, plus we're going to be using $625,000 in fund balance. So the total amount of one-time funds that we are using for the next budget is $1.7 million, pretty significant amount of one-time funds. Next slide, please, Mike. Now, one of the things that we wanted to provide based on our conversation last Thursday, we wanted to give you very specifically the personnel cuts that we are proposing to balance this budget. And the cuts actually are on two slides, I had them all on one, and it was just a little too crowded. Are you hearing me okay, by the way?
Yes.
Okay, so this first page, you see the list of all of the proposed cuts. And, and let me just say, I said it a million times, and I'll say it a million more. We don't want to cut anybody. We have worked really hard to get these positions in place. Classic example is the administrator. That's an elementary administrator who spends half her time at community for obvious reasons, given the size of that school's student population, and BF Norton, given the unique challenges that that school presents. So we worked really hard with that support of the school committee and the town to add that position, where, where because of this huge deficit that we have to fill, we have to, we have to dismantle what we have started to build. So we're also, we asked our administrators to work really hard in, on their schedule to maximize class loads, and that, that's why you see a number of schedule efficiencies. And our teacher's a great example at the high school. The elementary staff has been working really hard at developing a schedule that will meet our needs and at the same time save some positions. And this is, and here's an example here, the art teacher at the elementary level, we're cutting 8.8, you know, cutting a dean, huge gamble, in my opinion, 8.5 drama teacher, two ELA teachers at the high school, again.
Bob, Mr. Mitchell, I apologize. You're starting to break up.
Okay.
I, I didn't hear, when you said it was, it was a tough cut or difficult choice or something, can you repeat all that at the start of this?
Okay. You, you heard what I said about not wanting to cut anything.
Correct, I heard that, and then it started again choppy.
Okay, so decisions were made based on trying to make the schedule more efficient. And you make, for example, you make, or any, any schedule, you make a schedule more efficient by maximizing the number of students in sections. So I must commend all of the administrators, all of the building administrators, because they have done an outstanding job of making sure that all of the sections are maximized student-wise, and as a result, we've been able to eliminate some positions. And again, I don't want to, I think, I don't want to eliminate any position, but given the circumstances we're in, we have to be creative. So, so there you can see on that first slide, all of the positions that have been cut, and everybody has contributed here. So, Mike, next slide, please. All right, you're hearing me okay, still? All right, so you can see on this page, we have, we have eliminated a school counselor at the high school, we have eliminated one school counselor. So it'll be like a 0.5 at both North Cumberland Middle School and McCourt. We've eliminated two school counselors at the elementary level, and there you see, again, because our administrators have been, worked really hard at maximizing class load, the class load for, or sections for teachers, we've been able to save some sections. So 0.2 is a class, 0.4 is two classes, 0.8 is four sections, so, and so on. We've also eliminated resource TAs, and just so that everybody knows, resource TAs are teacher assistants that support special education. So they, they, you know, they, they're needed, and they work really hard in supporting students and teachers in special education. Kindergarten TAs, we have worked really hard to make, maintain kindergarten TAs in every single one of our kindergarten classes. We have had to reduce those. So we've eliminated five kindergarten TAs. We've also eliminated a special ed clerk. Mike, next slide, please.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
So I do have many questions, and I'm going to let you finish, but...
Okay, and just so that you know, Mr. Salvatore...
Yes.
I have just a couple more slides, and then we can all, you know, we have the whole team on the call, we'll answer.
Okay, all right, let's, let's do that. Finish the slides, and then I'll...
Okay, so if everybody, if you all could just, I think this is really important, if you all could read this slide, I think it sort of captures where we are. You know, we know that we have to be fiscally responsible. We are, of course, worried about the cuts we have to make, because we don't want to lose anybody. We, you know, I stated this last, the last time we met, we have, everyone has been exceptionally creative in helping us to reduce costs. And I know that, you know, there's some talk about using more fund balance to put back some of the cuts that are being recommended. And the concern is that we could potentially be creating a structural deficit in the future if we're using money in the bank to pay for operational costs, those ongoing costs. So, and, and remember, we already are using, as I, as I mentioned earlier, $1.7 million in one-time costs. Next slide, please, Mike. So the central office leadership team had a lengthy conversation about, okay, if we were in a position where we absolutely had to put some positions back in, or make a recommendation to put cuts that we recommended back into the budget, here is what we suggested. As you know, we recommended that two school counselors from the elementary level be eliminated. We are recommending that those elementary counselors be put back in. They are a valuable resource, not only to the students, but also to the staff and the school. So of the four that we had proposed to be cut, we're recommending, if, we would suggest, if we absolutely had to, we would recommend putting two elementary school counselors back in the budget. We believe that kindergarten TAs are vital to support the kindergarten teachers, and more importantly, the kindergarten students. Don't forget, they are teaching these little ones, these five-year-olds, these six-year-olds, they're teaching them how to do school when they first come to us at the start of the new school year. And the last recommendation we would make is to put graduation costs back in, the graduation expense back in the budget, because we have to do graduation. And if we do it ourselves, renting, renting equipment, sound system, all of the chairs and all of the man-hours or woman-hours that it would take to set everything up, you know, it, it's regardless of whether we do it at P-PAC or we do it ourselves, there's going to be a significant cost there. So we've decided to put that money back in. So next slide, Mike, please. So that was all of the thinking behind what I just shared with you. As I mentioned, we spent a great deal of time talking about, you know, what is the best thing to do under the circumstances? There are no easy decisions here, I'm sure everybody understands that, but we, but we did what we're asked to do and responded accordingly. So you have some questions, I'm sure there are other folks that have questions.
Yes, Mr. Mitchell, I'm going to start it. Mr. Chandler, can you, okay, thank you. If, if anybody, I'm going to start the questions, but if anybody would want to speak after this committee, just raise your hand, and then we'll, we'll get to you. So, Mr. Mitchell, let me see where I'm going to start. I'm looking at the cuts from last week to the cuts from this week. Last week it said 34 for the FTE cut, this week it says 33. I noticed you put in the ELL in McCourt. You put that back in?
Yeah.
That was, that was my mistake, yeah. I misread a, a spreadsheet regarding a cut and read it as a cut as opposed to a savings for retirement. So that's my mistake. I did send out a revised spreadsheet today.
Okay, I saw that. All right, thank you, Mrs. Dunkinson. Also, Mr. Mitchell, I did ask to put together some options using more fund balance. I don't see any of that here. What, and again, what you had put together is the same as last week?
No, 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 no. What I just shared with you, the, the recommendations regarding the two counselors, not, not knowing exactly how much you were, you wanted me to, how, you know, how much you wanted me to put back in dollar-wise, we started with those three cuts that I just mentioned.
Okay.
Two elementary school, putting back two elementary school counselors, putting back five kindergarten TAs, and putting back graduation. So that was, between, between those three things, we're looking at approximately $210,000 or so.
If, just for a conversation, if we bring our fund balance to the minimum per the policy of 2%, how much more does that give us to play with in our budget?
Well, I think, I mean, Mr. Pragnano is on the call, he can answer that, because he knows exactly how much there is right now in fund balance. But I just, remember the danger is using, you know, one-time funds to cover the cost of an ongoing, you know, operational cost. So there is danger in doing that.
I agree. I've been on the school committee, I think, eight years, and I, and again, no disrespect, I've not seen any kind of structural, structural deficit take place. So what, what is, Mr. Pragnano, if we bring it to 2%, how much more can we put back into the budget for discussion purposes?
Well, first of all, if you took it to 2%, I don't know of any school district in America that's a 2%. The lowest I could find anywhere online was 4%.
I know, and I understand all that, but our policy says we can use...
Just telling you.
Okay, well, thank you.
You might not, you might not want to be all alone. I just thought I'd mention that.
No, no, thank you.
You took 2%, you could put another million, too.
Okay, so we could, this committee has, has the option to put another $1.2 million back into our budget. That's what you're telling me?
You, you have the option to, you have the option to take, to do anything you want.
Well, we have to stay within what our policy is on that. And then also, last week, and maybe I just read the spreadsheets wrong, we discussed that the total COVID savings was going to be around 1.2. Looking at this, it looks like it's going to be 900,000, but with the summing of funds, it brings it up to 1.378. Can you touch base on that?
It's because we're looking to buy $300,000 of Chromebooks from those savings immediately.
Okay.
So that, the, you know, there's only so much money we have in next year, you know, from the town, town lease and all that avenues we have, so we figured we use some of those COVID savings now on what should be... So we figured we use some of those COVID savings now on what should be the way we spend the COVID savings. Since they're one-time, we should spend it on one-time items.
Agreed. No, I, I can understand that. Not, not that I agree with it, but I can understand it. Okay, so, Mr. Mitchell, if we put back those three positions, how much was that coming to again?
I think it was about, I think we said it was about 200.
I got it.
About 220,000 dollars.
Okay, 220,000.
Mr. Salvatore, I don't know if you can see, Mrs. Friedman, she was raising her hand.
Oh, I, I apologize. Mrs. Friedman, go ahead.
Oh, that's okay. And once, if you're done, I have some additional questions.
I'm glad you do. I just have one, I just have one more. Well, I do have a bunch more, but I'm going to, I'm going to let you speak, but the one more real quick. Mr. Mitchell, where's that 220 going to come from?
The 220, I just, I just shared that with you. The 220 is going to come from, the 220 is going to come from, oh, I thought we said you, you would be using fund balance.
More, so that would come more out of fund balance? Okay. And then, real quick, how about that 560 that I heard about? 560,000?
530,000 that we're getting for stimulus money?
Correct.
Okay, so we're going to be, as I, as I mentioned earlier, the goal is to use that, like, 99% of it, maybe that's a little high, but the goal is to use most of that to purchase, it'll be for technology-related items, both hardware, servers, and we need to get some technology for adults in the district, so it'll be for teachers as well. So, yeah, it is, the bulk of that money will be used for technology.
Okay. Mrs. Friedman?
Yeah, okay, thank you. Um, I have maybe some high-level questions, just to make sure we are all talking about the same thing, because I'm finding I'm getting a little lost. So, so we're starting, we started saying we have a 4.8 million dollar deficit.
Right.
Then on the slide where it said about fiscally your 2020 savings is 1.3, almost 1.4. So that's, that's, um, excuse me, we can carry that into our next budget, is what we're saying, right?
Well, we're going to use, we're going to use 300,000 of it to purchase technology in this budget.
Okay. The next slide where it says one-time use of COVID-19 savings in the CARES Act funds. So we're saying the total COVID-19 funds is 1,078,020. That is what? I, I'm getting confused between the previous slide and this slide in terms of what we're calling COVID-19 savings.
I agree.
Because it's not, it's not matching up. And one other thing to add into that is it says the CARES Act funds, but it doesn't, there's not a line item here. So are we getting? What is the amount that we are getting for the CARES Act funds?
Okay, so let me, let me answer that and then Alex can jump in with the other questions. We, we are going to be getting approximately 530,000 dollars in the stimulus money or CARES Act money. That is one-time money. And, and that is calculated by, the, the government has decided to base that dollar amount on our total Title I expenditure. So 80%, and it's, it's a, it's a percentage of our total one money. 80% of our Title I money is approximately 530,000 dollars. We also, just so that you know, part of that 530,000 dollars also has to go to private schools. So we have Mercy Mount in our district. Some of that money, not much, but some of that money will go to Mercy Mount. So we're going to, we're, we're expecting that we will, we will be getting five, at least 500,000 dollars of stimulus money or, you know, CARES Act money. Alex, you want to, you want to respond to the rest of that question to help?
Well, first of all, the CARES Act, the 530,000, there'll probably be 15,000 to 20,000, maybe 15,000 come out of there for private schools. Then we have 250 for the Chromebooks that were on that amended proposal list that you went through the other night, Bob. If they look at the 250 for Chrome, right above it, it says it's being paid for with the CARES money.
Yeah.
That's the, right? Then we're spending about 20,000 dollars on sanitizing equipment. We're buying these specialty machines, one at each school, to, because sanitation is one of the things that they look for, one of the things they really push to, to buy with this money. And if you're going to have kids, you know, coming in, different kids at different, you know, all that social distancing and who knows how school will be set up, we have to be able to clean schools, you know, really well each night. So that's about 20,000. Then the district Wi-Fi needs to be replaced. And Mike Chandler's on the call, he can tell you everything you want to know about it. But we can, we can get, it's about 135 to 140,000 dollars, and we can get 50% of it paid for. So we should use 65, 70,000 dollars to do that Wi-Fi. So that, that leaves about 175 to 195,000 dollars of that money that isn't yet earmarked. But there's, you know, there, there's so many things yet to play. I mean, like, what, you know, one of the things, and Bob can go into this if he wants, you know, and deeper. We had a conversation with the mayor today, and I got to say, the mayor is absolutely working as hard as he can to help us in this budget. We told him our situation of, you know, that we have this CARES money that we can use for technology and maybe he could reduce his lease, could he find money that would be immediate for us? And he's turning over every rock. He said, I think he, Bob, jump in, I think he said that he would, he was going to look and he thought maybe because we have another meeting Thursday, he might have an answer on that for us. Is that correct, Bob?
Yeah, he said, he said he would look into it. And I would agree 100% with everything you said. And we'll, we'll know one way or another.
So the, so the jobs that Bob is recommending, if you wanted to put something back in, that couple hundred thousand dollars, the mayor may find for us. And he had an idea that he was going to check into. And so we may just want to give him an opportunity to do a little looking before we make any adjustments or, or plug in any of the COVID money, I mean, the CARES money or any of that type of stuff. We could talk about it, you know, so that everyone understands exactly what the issues are tonight, but we could maybe, you could hold off on your vote out of finance till Thursday because you have that meeting, a finance meeting right before the regular meeting, I believe.
Okay, so if I can, if I can just continue, Mr. Chair, just at a high level. I'm just trying to make sure we understand what we're talking about. So we said we have 4.875 deficit coming into it. We're talking about using 1.7 one-time funds, which then brings the, the deficit down to 3.1 million. And what?
The, the 4.8 was the budget that's before you now, before the amendments, right? It was about 2.4 million growth on the revenue side, you know, the, the million eight from the mayor being the big piece of it. And there was about the same amount of reductions, things that had, that grew in good, things that grew on the expenditure side. And the total of them totaled about 4.8 million. If you notice your budget though, because it's two up, down, two up in expenditures, two down in revenues, it stayed almost around the same number. The budget didn't change by four or five million dollars. So that million, what that second column doing, that million seven of COVID that came around, really doesn't have anything to do with the 4.8. It really has to do with replacing the million eight and the additional money that we absorbed by, like, increasing the unemployment budget, increasing the special ed budget by 150,000, increasing the Aspen line item. It was, that million seven is kind of, that 4.8 is kind of taken care of with the budget that's before you. Unfortunately, the million eight 23 isn't going to come in all in as maintenance of effort. So that resulted in the second wave of items and the COVID and stuff kind of falls in that. Really doesn't go 4.8, a million seven off that to get to 3.1. Does that make it a little clearer?
No, but let me see if I can make it clear. So, so we started this saying we have a 4.875 deficit. And then we talked about these COVID savings and maintenance of effort from the town at 1.5 million or whatever. What, what I'm unclear of is what is the actual, if we, if we, we take into account the COVID savings, we take into account the maintenance of effort that the town last week said that was 1.5 million that we could, that they would take? So what is the actual deficit that we're talking about right now based on this budget that's proposed tonight? Because it's not 4.875, is it?
No, well, there's actually, with the list of items that we gave you in that second column, there is no doubt, the budget's balanced. It uses the COVID savings, the reduction in preschool transportation, you know, all those, the, the graduation was in there one time, the 12,000, those, all those items close that gap to where if you, if you just took that list of amended items and passed that, you would have a, you'd have a budget that is balanced.
Okay, my last question before you carry on with everything else is, what is, we're, we're talking about 26.7 positions being cut. Now, 6.3 of them are due to scheduling efficiencies. The remaining are due, actually, 33 positions. The remaining 26.7 are for budgetary reasons. Can you tell me what the total amount is for those 33 positions?
Yeah, when I figured my unemployment number, and I, you know, I, I added them up quickly, it was about 1.1 million.
Okay. That's all I have for right now. I'm sure I'll be back.
Thank you. Dr. Santa, hold on one minute. Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Pregnato, I thought I had, I'm going back to my notes, I thought I had mentioned that I would have liked to have seen a whole spreadsheet of everything outlined, all the COVID, the positions, what they amount to. Can we, can we get that together? I mean, I know we're running out of time here.
Well, we can, if, if we have the list of positions, I guess we can, we can put a column on that and put their salaries.
But also, I, I wanted to see, all, all the, I, I mean, I can't speak to Mrs. Friedman.
On one of the, on one of the sheets, I put the COVID number, the 550 for health.
There's a lot of COVID, I, I mean, I.
You tell me, you tell me what you want, you tell me what you want, Ray, I'll get you the list.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Chair, which document are we looking at when he says the, what is the one, there's a lot of documents here.
Oh, yeah.
So what is the one?
Mr. Pregnato, which one is the document that you're referring to? The one that you sent last week?
Yeah, it was one of the four that I sent you last week. I sent you the budget, I sent you the personnel supplement, I sent you a revenue sheet that you really didn't have to concern yourself with, but I sent it to the mayor, so I sent it to you people also. That's the revenue sheet the mayor's going to incorporate in his budget. And then we, then we had that amended list of the million eight 23. And I think it was, I think it was on page two of that amended list. I, I think I listed the town money, the COVID money.
Yeah, I see it.
It's still, it's still a little choppy though with the COVID. It's still not broken out, broken out where it's clear.
Well, and then you could see it kind of on the amended list too, Ray, because wherever I increase.
Looking at it right now.
Expenditure that, wherever I increase an expenditure that was going to be paid for by COVID, I put the COVID number right under it. So if you look at unemployment, you see 550 in, 550 out, COVID.
Got it.
You see special ed, 150 in, 150 out, COVID. Then you see the technology lease, COVID underneath it, right?
Okay.
Those are the COVIDs. But, but I'll put it on a separate, you know, spreadsheet and I'll send it off to you.
All right. Dr. Santa?
Um, I just wanted to be clear for the layman on, on the phone conversation because like, we've been working on the budget for a very long time, but there's a lot of members at the meeting that have not been immersed in this. And they may be wondering why, why can't we use the CARES money to cover positions? That's the money that we're getting for stimulus money. And I just wanted to let everybody know, the reason is, is that it's only being allowed to be used on very, very finite items, things like technology is being, being one of them. We can't use it to pay for positions.
Okay, thank you.
So I just wanted to be clear on that.
I, I do have a question for Tony DiMona. Tony, are you still on? You on here?
I'm here, I'm here, Ray.
And also with, with Mr. Mitchell as well, what, what positions would you, can you, can you rank these positions that we're cutting? Which ones are the most important to you?
Superintendent provided a slide on how he ranked them in terms of coming back, I believe, Ray. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, that's five, six, seven. So that's seven positions. With graduation representing 221. So with those aside, which other ones are priority as well?
Well. Bobby, you going to answer that one?
Well, yeah, I, I, I think, I think we also talked about, there is a, there's a point four special ed clerk and a, and a point four school psychologist. Those would be the next two things that we feel we should add back in. But I just, I just, you know, I just want to make sure everybody understands that if we use one-time money to pay for positions that are ongoing, we're creating a structural deficit. I just need to make sure that everybody understands that.
Okay, you know, Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Pregnato, help me, help me understand a structural deficit. How, how would that be?
Okay, I'll take that, Bob.
That's a good question. That, that's something that everybody needs to know. That's a good question, Mr. Salvatore.
What I did, what I, what I did today is, I did it actually yesterday. I took that 21 budget that's before you and I copied it. And then I went in and labeled it 22 and I went in and made an adjustment. And for example, if you look at that, I don't know, I sent it to everyone, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it. I took the one-time revenues out and you'll see them zero on the revenue sheet where the, where the money was. And there was money, you know, in the 21. For example, the 400 of healthcare claims from the town, the seven, the 700-plus thousand dollars for the town lease and the COVID savings and the 700,000 use of fund balance. Then I went on the expenditure side and everywhere where it's a one-time expenditure, like if you went to the high school budget, you'd see 500,000 in for high school security this year, you'd see a zero next year because we won't have that cost. If you looked at unemployment, you see the, you see the number this year, you'll see the number reduced by 550 next year because I would hope we wouldn't have these type of reductions next year. Things would be more normal. So I did all that and the only thing I added in was teacher steps, because there will be teacher steps. And I added in 120,000, that's the known cost that the Durham bus contract goes up next year. I know that number today, so I can, I added it in. And then I put the 1.1 million that you just asked me about in salaries onto that number. And you come up with, before you've addressed a second year of a contract for ICSI, which would have a second year of no raise, no raise for teachers, no raise for administrators, no increase in Blue Cross, no increase in charter schools, no increase in pensions, everything flat that we know will go up. Your gap is 3.5 million dollars next year before those things. And that's why the superintendent is hammering home this point, that we will put ourselves in a position that we can't balance our way out of.
Well, Mr. Pregnato, a lot of those positions that you just mentioned, the Durham and those other contracts, we already had those extended into this year's budget from previous year budget as well.
No, no, these are the increases next year. Steps will go up next year again, 550,000 dollars.
Oh, I thought I saw, I thought you saw something. I apologize.
The Durham contract, that's the increase in next year's contract goes up 120,000. And those are the only things I put in. If you look that, you know, I, I also put in the summer school. I would imagine summer school would return to a more normal summer school next year, not virtual.
So hold on, Mr. Pregnato, so those items that you just mentioned, they're already in the, this budget that we're looking at, correct?
No, they're not in this budget. We don't have summer school in the budget this year.
No, for next year, for next year.
No, we don't, we don't have it in 20, we don't have the, we don't have that, no, it's not in 21. We've taken it out. It's a one-time savings this year. It's part of the 1.7 million you're saving this year because you're not, you're going to run summer school virtually. So because you run it virtually, Rachel doesn't need her TAs and we won't be busing.
For next year's budget, I'm talking about.
Yeah, but, but in 21, that will come back and you'll have.
That's what I'm talking about. So in this, in this budget.
That's part of the three and a half million dollar gap you'll, you'll be sitting with before you do really anything.
So we did not include the increase for the salaries for next year's budget?
For what year, 21?
21. 21.
Yeah, the, yeah, the raises are in there for next year.
Okay, so so everything you just mentioned.
There's no, there's no, there's no raise in there for ICSI at this point. There's no money in for ICSI.
Okay.
Because their contract expires. The teacher 2% is in there.
Okay.
Then the following year, the following year, I don't know what the teacher, the contract will be, but you wouldn't be able to, you know, there's, in that three and a half million dollar gap, there's no money, none of that is for a teacher raise, but maybe the teachers will will not get a raise. ICSI, you have to ask them to go a second year with no raise.
Okay, so, so I understand. How will the the structural deficit affect us for 2021 if we use $1 million more of our fund balance? Mr. Mitchell?
I mean, this is the way, and I don't know, I don't, and this may help other folks understand how how this works. So running, imagine, imagine the school department budget, right, with all of the positions included, is like a mortgage, right? We know, we know that what our mortgage is and we have to pay our mortgage every month, right? So we all, you know, we hopefully have income that supports paying the mortgage. So imagine the school department budget is the mortgage. What we're talking about here and 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 all of the pieces of the department go into running the school department, which is, the biggest part of it is salaries, right? So included in in this school department budget, included in the school apartment mortgage is all of these things that we're talking about. Now imagine that we're using money in the bank, we're using money in the bank to pay for some of those positions, right?
No, I get all that, Mr. Mitchell.
So this is where the structural deficit comes in. Sooner or later, the money in the bank to pay for ongoing expenses, to pay for the mortgage, which we know is we're going to get every month, there's, there's the money in the bank runs out because we've been using that to pay the expenses, to pay for all of the positions. That's the, that's what helps me understand that sooner or later, if we're using money in the bank to pay for things that we know are ongoing, like positions, then sooner or later, we're going to run out of money.
Mr. Mitchell, I, I agree, I understand what you're saying, but we're only using it for one year, for 2021.
But then we have to continue to pay those positions in the next year and everything related to it. So if we, if we have the money now, but yeah, we wouldn't have it later.
No, I, I agree with you, I agree. But it, but it, what I'm saying is, it pulls up, our policy said we can between 2% and 4%. So if we bring it to 2%, that's an additional 1.2 million or 1 million or whatever we want to use.
Well, and I, and I think, Mr. Chair, it's the same conversation that the mayor is having with the, with the town's budget of should we be pulling from our fund balance and using that money and that, you know, part of the problem, the challenge with where we're at right now is part of the town problem that we have. And the mayor's been clear about that. So let me just ask a clarifying question.
Please.
So we, you know, originally created our budget based on a hope that we would get 4% increase from the town, which is the 1.8 million. And that would be through tax increases. We, I believe that 4% from the town related to tax increases cannot happen. So the mayor has found other creative ways, like through maintenance of effort and other things, to find some money. But am I correct in saying that if, if the town was in a better position financially, we would be able to have that 1.8 million from the town that would allow our budget to be more balanced? I just want people to understand that this is, there's in, you know, and the mayor does a great job of explaining, explaining all of this and how it all works, but the huge, the big problem here is that we can't get the funding from the town that we need and we're finding creative ways to try to fill the gaps. But if we don't have that, then we are forced to look at how, why do we have to do all these cuts? And I want, just want people to understand that that is what a big, huge part of this equation is, is the town funding, the reduction in the state funding and annual costs that just keep going up. And there's no, you know, cost of living increase for, for the school's budget. And I have another question to ask, if you don't mind.
Yes.
And I, and I kind of hate to ask this question, but I know it's the, you know, financial situation that we're in. If the administrators and the teachers were willing to not take an increase in this fiscal year and push it into the next year, what would the savings be on that?
Be 800 plus thousand, between 800 and 900,000 with pension.
And we're talking about those 33 positions we were talking about cutting equal about 1.1 million dollars.
Correct.
And if we, if there wasn't a salary increase in the fiscal year 2021, we'd have about 800, 900,000 in savings.
Yeah, the teacher raise, the teacher raise is about 667,000, the administrator's about 78,000. And then when you put the pension on top of it, the pension is about 15% on top of that, seven change, it's gonna, gonna go, get around 900,000.
Let me just ask if those, if, if, if that, could that money be used to save the 33 position or the 26.7 positions that are cut, being cut due to the budget? Could that cost savings be used for those positions?
Of course. Well, yeah, and what, what we thought is if, if we were able to negotiate something like that, we would work out a plan where over the next three years or so, we would, you know, in the teacher's case, by seniority and the administrators, there's only 20 something of them, so you do them all in one year, whatever year you chose. Over the next three years, you would get that money back to people. Or if they left the district for whatever reason, retire and found another job, that they'd get it immediately upon leaving. So it would get, it would buy you a little time. What we're trying to do is buy a little time to get through a real tough stretch with the town fears might happen to their, you know, with state aid, what, what may happen to their tax collections, what happened with our state aid or 852,000 dollar reduction, right? These are unnormal, these are things that are not normal. You know, if not getting an increase in state aid is a whole lot different than getting a $900,000 reduction in state aid, right? And so this was kind of like a, you know, like a perfect storm type of thing hit this year that we wanted to try to get through, you know. But, but to get through it, to make it, you know, to get through and to keep everything we have and to build such a gap next year, you would put 22 and 23. And I mean, I, I can't be more, can't emphasize that using that amount of money would be devastating in the future, I think, to the school department budget.
Using, you mean using the fund balance money? Is that what you're saying, Alex?
Well, to put it, yeah, to put another million one on top of that, what we've already used, I think would be, would put, would put us in for a big fall in 22, in 20, a, a situation that we might not, we might not be able to even, you know, legally get with 12% taxing increase in the, in the town levy, might not be enough to even get us out of the hole. We don't know what's going to happen with state aid next year. The state's looking at anywhere from a 550 to 800 million dollar budget deficit. Anyone who thinks state aid's going to come rolling back in, I think is very optimistic.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Mitchell.
Forgive me, Mrs. Friedman, but here's the thing, and we, we are in the unfortunate position of having to go through this every single year. And the reason that we're going through this every single year and we'll be going through it again and again and again is because for so many years, Cumberland, the Cumberland School Department was level funding and I don't know that we're ever going to be able to catch up. So, so I can't, I can't emphasize enough that having the lowest per pupil in the state at $14,500 per student, when the state average is $17,500 per student, I, I mean, it's just, we go through this every single year because we are, we spend less per pupil than anybody else in any, and we've had multiple committees review, audit our finances and everybody says we're doing a great job with taxpayer money, we're as lean as lean can be, we go through this. And that's clearly, you're hearing some frustration here because we go through this every single year and we're going to be going through it again next year. We're, we're in a tough spot because we're so underfunded. That, that's the, that's the situation where.
Mr. Mitchell, thank you. Mr. Mitchell, the, the resource TAs elementary 8.0, which elementary school?
We, when we were, when we were having conversations about cuts, we know that we have resource, you're talking about the resource TAs.
Yes, correct.
We figured that we would, the thinking was that in order to sort of share the pain, that we would take one, that we would reduce the budget by one resource TA per school. That was the thinking.
Mr. Mitchell, just so you know where I'm coming from, I mean, I'm an advocate for the children. I think you, you're doing a great job, all of the administration's doing a great job. I'm an advocate for the children. And I know you are as well, but I struggle, I'm struggling with these positions. So in desperate times, we do desperate things and that's why I'm mentioning the fund balance. I know this, this fiscal meeting is Mr. DiMonica and Mrs. Bernato. Are you two willing to take a vote right now to, if you want to support Superintendent Mitchell's budget? Do you want to add anything in? And then we bring it to the full committee on Thursday and then the full committee can add or take out whatever they want.
Mr. Salvatore.
Mr. DiMonica.
Yeah, we've been doing this exercise year after year. We take a little bit of the fund balance.
Eight years, Mr. DiMonica, you and I.
Right, you're right. We put it into the, into the budget and we add jobs little by little, we get help from the town. But if we use another million dollars of fund balance, it will not be there next year.
Correct.
We already know we lost $845,000 from the state funding next year alone, on top of losing almost 300 million, $300,000 and the extra funds we get for children in free and reduced lunch. So if you were to add those two numbers together to the 1.8 million dollars that we're asking the town, we're really only asking the town for maybe 506, $500,000 extra because we can't go over the 4%. We don't want to lose jobs. We certainly have talked to the union about delaying the pay increase, but they've given back for years as well and they, you know, they kindly remind us of that, that, you know, it's always on their back that we have to go back to the teachers and ask them for. I was in a meeting with the union and the union asked if any other town departments were going to be asked and there wasn't a clear answer, the other departments would take a cut or wait for their increases. If we take the 1.1 million, we're left with maybe Alex, one, one and a half million dollars next year in fund balance left.
Okay, so I'm just listening.
How do we continue if we want to do this?
Mr. Pignano, take your phone off of mute.
So 2% on 72 million dollars is about.
Mr. DiMonica, here he is. Go ahead, Mr. Pignano.
Well, there's going to be some, some surplus this year that, and I, I hear, I mean, I don't even know, I don't even really think the budget that we're going to send down to the town right now will be the budget that we, will, will be the final budget. I think there's going to be a lot of shoes still to fall with this social distancing and.
Mr. Pignano, Mr. Pignano, we're holding, just, Mr. Pignano, just answer, answer Mr. DiMonica's question now, just so we can stand point here.
Well, I can answer it.
Well, I can't, I, I don't know what, I don't know what we'll have left of surplus right off the top of my head because I don't know how this year is going to end, you know, that there's still, there's still high school boilers to be, that need to be fixed, that they're nowhere, they're not in the 83 million, they're not in any master lease at this point, you know, somewhere along there, that has to be done. I don't know, I don't know where, what exactly they're going to be.
So we're adding to a surplus possibly this year?
Well, it's not going to be natural because of.
Yeah, well, what you're going to have to do, what you're going to have to do, whatever you, if you, when you add to the surplus this year, you're going to have to designate that for use in 21. That's how the orders will set it up. So it won't be free and clear to use. You're going to designate 700,000 of that surplus because we've already, we're including it in our budget to balance it. If you were to put another million one in there, you'd have to, you'd have to designate a million eight towards balancing the 2021 budget. But, you know, and then if the COVID, a lot of the COVID savings are going to come in, they're going to explode the budget surplus up right now because they're going to be spent on items in next year's budget. That 900,000 will show as a surplus this year.
Correct.
But if we know we're going to spend it all next year in special ed, unemployment, technology and those areas. So it's kind of like, almost similar to what the town went through with their taxes when they collected a big amount of taxes that, because a lot of the bank paid all four quarters at one time and they weren't expecting that, they ran up a big surplus, knowing they weren't going to have that collection though in the, in the other three quarters and it was going to affect the next year budget. That's almost what's happening with the COVID money. We got this big windfall of money because of, you know, because of, you know, everyone being home, no busing mainly the reason. And, but that money's all going to go, we're using it all next year in the budget. So.
Okay.
Yeah, the surplus will grow from the, from the, from the amount that's in the budget right now, but it's going to be like a, like a fake number because it's going to go right back down the next year.
Mr. DiMonica, did you have any other questions for?
No, this.
Mrs. Bernato, did you have anything to, to add?
Yeah, just, you know, like everyone, you know, we don't want to lose, not even one position if we can avoid it. But it seems like every year, and this year is just the worst ever for it, we come up with creative ways to keep people, but not sustainable ways to keep people. And I think that's what everyone's really nervous about is, you know, if we can save everything this year, we don't know what the economy as a whole is going to be like next year, not just in our town, but in our state and everywhere else. If we dig ourselves in too deep, you know, are we going to end up hurting ourselves more in the long run? And that's, that's, you know, that's a very big concern.
I agree. I, I, I always have a concern of kicking the can down the road as well on, on salaries. But, all right, Mr. DiMonica, Mrs. Bernato, a motion for the budget?
Well, I motion the table until the next meeting. We have another meeting before fiscal, I mean, so we, maybe we'll get better numbers. I know it's only three days away, but maybe the town will have a better idea of where we're going, what's funding. I know the mayor has been talking to the superintendent and Mr. Pignano a lot about what we can do and how to make things work and whatever budget we send to the mayor, we're going to have to adopt our own, a new budget anyways to reconcile with the town. And maybe, you know, the legislature, we got Rep. McLaughlin trying to get us another 1.2 million. Good luck to him because he's the only one that's sticking his neck out there. And maybe, you know, we get lucky, maybe the, we don't lose the 845,000, they're pushing for that as well in the legislature. And something can happen, but we're going to have to adopt another budget, you know, that reconciles with the town down the road, you know, and not too long.
I agree. I know we'll have another stab at this, I know it comes back to us as well. All right, so Mr. DiMonica makes a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bernato, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, 3-0. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Anyone would like to speak? Mr. Chandler, could you please help facilitate this? Because I think I have four pages, I have four pages of people on here, so if anyone wants to speak, please say it.
Mr. Chair, this is Mrs. Waters.
Yes.
Just a couple of notes. So for, for next meeting, I also echo what Mrs. Friedman said earlier as far as the fiscal year 2021 budget presentation, there were a lot of different numbers that I found it really confusing where I think I know what you were getting at as far as the 4.8 number, but since it's irrelevant now, I don't think we need to even bring it up. So. we need to even bring it up, so I would really like to see a very concise view of where we're at.
I, I agree, Mrs. Waters, I'm going to, we're going to jump on the, I'm going to jump on the phone tomorrow with Superintendent Mitchell and Mr. Brignano and outline a spreadsheet that I think everybody would like to see.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And then my summary was around the fund balance, I, there are different numbers as far as what the actual plan for fund balances, I see 625 in some, and I, and I know we talked about 700 in the last one, so let's, let's just make sure, of all the different views that we have.
Can I answer that?
Yes, please.
Mr. Brignano, go ahead.
Yeah, the six twenty, who's this, is this Heidi?
Mrs. Waters, yes.
Yeah, Mrs. Waters, how are you? The 625 was the amount of money we used in the budget that is before you right now, the one that included the million eight twenty-three from the town, that was our original use, 625. In the next, now, when we lost the million eight twenty-three, and we've added other expenses into the budget, we, we took an additional 75,000 and brought that number to 700,000, so it is 700,000, is what the, the number is as of now, that, that we're recommending, it's 625 before you, but the recommended with that amended column, that we would make change, those changes in the budget, if you approve them, would take fund balance to 700.
Thank you, Mr. Brignano.
You're welcome.
Mayor, Mayor Mutter, I believe you wanted to say something, are you there?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Welcome, Mayor.
How are you doing? So I, I just, on the public comment, I just want to, you know, I hate to jump on the Chairman Demonic's comments about Rep. McLaughlin being the only one sticking his neck out, but the fact of the matter is, the council has passed at least one resolution to ask the, the General Assembly to, at minimally, not defund the school system, that unanimously passed, there was also, I've also spoken to all the other reps and senators that represent Cumberland about this issue, and also, I think I emailed to the chair and to the superintendent and Mr. Brignano about the, the Educational Stabilization Fund, which I think ultimately is part of where that 530,000 dollars that's being spoken about tonight came from, so I just want to be sensitive to the fact that everybody and their brother who represents Cumberland has been doing everything they can to try to help in this situation, so, and I am in constant contact with Rep. McLaughlin, and in fact, the legislation that he sent in, the last one, I crafted that, so, just so everyone knows that he is, and this is in no disrespect to Rep. McLaughlin, but this is to acknowledge all the other elected officials who are doing everything they can to rectify the situation, he is by no means the only person sticking his neck out, have a good evening.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I, I also have someone else who would like to speak, Ms. Mudge, I believe, Ms. Mudge, are you there?
Yep, hi, can you hear me?
Hello, Ms. Mudge, we can hear you.
Hi, thank you, I'm a kindergarten teacher, I've worked at community school, and I'm at Cumberland Hill now, I just wanted to thank Mr. Mitchell for what he said about the KTA's and how essential they are, I feel like sometimes there's a misconception that all they kind of do is make copies and get supplies ready and staple, but they're an extremely critical part of the day, they help us at centers, they help the kids with independent work, my TA is still helping with the online learning, she works one-on-one with kids on Google Meet, she was texting me at five o'clock tonight, telling me she was like writing up a report for me, and I have to say, overall, the K kids seem to come into school needier and needier each year in terms of coping skills, problem-solving skills, social emotional skills, they need a lot of support, and that's in just a regular year, and I really can't imagine coming back from a pandemic with whatever rules might be in place in terms of masks, or distancing, or whatever, with five-year-olds and not having that support there. So I just wanted to thank Mr. Mitchell for attempting to add that back into the budget, and just, like, I can't overstate the importance of these KTA's.
Thank you, Ms. Mudge.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Mr. Chandler, do you want?
Could I, could I say something?
Yes, Mrs. Deion, thank you for attending.
Oh, thank you for opening it up, I did have a lot written, but I'm going to try and make it brief, as it's been a long meeting, and I also wanted to, Mr. Mitchell for stating that he wanted to put elementary school counselors back in, as one of the school counselors, I feel that department keeps getting hit as well, losing the K to 12 director, the department head at the, the department chair at the high school, a secretary, we've been working very hard in making connections and rapport with our students and distance learning, as with everyone else, it's not been an easy task, especially trying to help our students from afar or virtually, and for myself personally, I am very worried with cutting this position, or cutting any of the counseling positions, as people are saying, this are, they're uncharted waters, and next year, we don't know what it's going to be like to not have support to help our students there, is concerning. Last year, we were going to cut school counseling positions, and parents and students came out and spoke at town council meetings and school committee meetings about how important the service was, elementary through high school. I just really wish that it would be reconsidered if funds are available for those positions to be able to come back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Deion. Anyone else? If not, pleasure the committee to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Demonic makes a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bernato, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, three, zero. Thank you, everyone, for attending. School committee, we'll see you on Thursday, thank you.